Councilor Brown, all in favor? All right. The floor of the wall is yours.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Appreciate you giving us this opportunity to share.
If they can't hear, just put your hand up and he'll speak louder.
Yeah.
Use your teacher voice.
I will, I'll work on it. It's a bit rusty, but I'll work on it. Yeah, we thank you for this opportunity to share our vision of a tourism initiative that we think has some great potential and will be of long-term benefit to the town of Carstens. So, we'll jump right into this. This is Grant Tolly, by the way. Can you bring your face out here so everybody can see it? We're gonna be tucked back in this corner, so then, yeah, you'll hear him and I, his voices, but you won't be able to see us as well. So, we'll get started anyway.
Okay, so can everybody hear me enough? Enough, let's go. Well, Mr. Tolly and myself have formed a planning and project management firm, and we call it the Earth Initiative, and we will coordinate all aspects of this project should be approved through this Earth Initiative. Okay, about Grant, okay, give you a bit of background. I've known Grant for many years. He has a stellar portfolio, working with projects like this one that we're proposing today. He has 35 years under his belt as a project manager and consultant with direct hands-on experience in the design and building of cultural facilities and exhibits around the province. These include Headsmashed Inn, the Tyro Museum, the new Royal Alberta Museum, and the Remington Museum, just to name a few. Specific responsibilities with Remington Museum include a display and design and construction. Grant was also responsible for Headsmashed Inn's designation as a UNESCO World Heritage Site, and he still works with UNESCO sites around the world. Okay. Turn it over for anybody that doesn't know me.
And, yes, Shane is, you all know him, a hometown man. Is a top educator, has been a schoolteacher, an archaeologist, and I might say a professional archaeologist, graphic artist and artist extraordinaire, if you have seen any of his artworks. As an archaeologist, he has discovered significant paleontological and archaeological sites and resources in this region, notably at Wally's Beach Site, which is 15 or 20 minutes from here. And this site has gained international attention as a premier site, producing many unique, never-before-seen materials. He's a qualified professional archaeologist, as I mentioned, and is one of four principal investigators at the Wally's Beach Site. He also has experience in museum display design and implementation, and I could keep going with his resume, but that would give a good background of what's, what we're going to be talking about tonight. Okay, so this is a new tourism initiative, and somewhat inspired by the initiative that I'm sure all of you are aware of, is underway to open the Carway border crossing 24/7. And what's going to happen there is, we're gonna see more people coming up that highway and coming through Carstens, across that border crossing. This is a proposal to take advantage of these available high-interest heritage assets with world heritage significance. I can't emphasize enough, we're talking about world-class materials here at the Wally's Beach Archaeological Site.
Okay, so I'm gonna try and just paint a little word painting for you, if I might, on what we're talking about specifically with the Wally's Beach. But first, we want to point out that we recognize the potential for these materials to support and enhance the town of Carstens' existing tourism plan. So, we'll get into that in a minute, but just let me give you a little bit of a background. So, imagine, if you will, Carstens before fences, buildings, and roads. In fact, let me take you back to a time when spruce and aspen groves broke the endless waves of prairie grasslands as far as you could see in any direction. Among the aspens, you spot a woolly mammoth wandering toward an open plain, where a host of primordial animals intermingled, including extinct camels and horses, caribou and musk oxen, and much harder to see rather predators, like the short-faced bear, the scimitar cat, by the way, which is exclusively a mammoth hunter, the American lion, and the cunning dire wolf. Now, imagine you are one of the first known humans in North America, coexisting in this often brutal but astonishingly beautiful landscape. Now, I'm describing what we are finding at Wally's Beach. It's been a rich harvest of artifacts, bones, and one-of-a-kind tracks of these extinct animals, not seen anywhere else in the world. This really rich and prehistorically significant place that we call home really is the untold story of Carstens', and that's going to be central to our presentation tonight. So, what does this have to do with tourism and economic development in Carstens? Let me draw your attention to the Tyro Museum, one of the top five dinosaur museums in the world. Annually, they draw 450,000 visitors, although a smaller venue, a Wally's Beach focus, would certainly attract many of the Tyro Museum clientele. And I might add to a much more tourist-friendly destination, in our opinion. The Tyro Museum, quite frankly, is right out there in the middle of nowhere. We will speak a little bit more about this, but thematically, we really can't compete with dinosaurs, but we're running a very close second with the Ice Age fauna arising from the ground of Wally's Beach. Now, these Ice Age animals have a great track record in popular culture, and we're very well-positioned to take advantage of this dynamic heritage resource. We believe we can conservatively attract 10% of the visitors from Tyro Museum. That's 40,000 tourists that would be willing to drop some cash at Carstens'. So, again, we think that's quite a conservative estimate, and we don't have any data really to support that, but I think we're pretty close on that. And, given our proximity to Glacier Park, which attracts 3 million-plus visitors annually, and the fact that we're one of two major roads into Alberta, we're very well-suited and situated on the map to lay claim as the gateway to Alberta tourism. And this road, again, will speak more about that.
So, current tourism status. On which button do I push it? Just the spacebar, it's shared out there. Okay. We know that the town's Economic Development Committee is very aptly named, and I have read through your tourism plan, very aptly named as the Economic Development and Tourism Board, and what this says to me in particular is that you are well-aware that tourism is probably your first and your best, not your only, economic development prospect. Tourism is the wave of the future for many small towns in Alberta. We will add some, I've got a whole list here, what appears in your plan. Of course, the Carriage Museum, the LDS Temple, Courthouse Museum, the Carriage House Theater, and on to the next one here, the Carpe Pioneer Home. These are all great assets. The Creek Golf Course, the Family Reunion Center, and Carstens, of course, is a staging town, a staging area for Waterton, what happens in Waterton, maybe a little less so now since the fire last year, but there's still people gonna be going to Waterton, trail rides in the foothills and similar activities, and the Great Canadian Barn Dance. So, we've listed eight or 10 there of what you already recognize as your tourism assets. And what we would like to do is to add to that list. We've discussed with Councilor Selk a bit, and with some other folks, this initiative to see if we can get the border open, convince the federal government to keep that open on a 24/7 basis, and that will spark some change. It may seem like a small change, but it will spark some change in traffic patterns and the amount of traffic that comes across that border from heading north and the other direction. I think we'll see that as well, people from northern Alberta coming this way rather than going across to Coots. So, we'd like to introduce you to a concept, what we're calling the Carstens Trail, Gateway to Alberta. Carstens will become, at least the second biggest gateway into Alberta. Coots, of course, takes the main part of the traffic, both north and south now. Carstens has that potential to rival the Coots Crossing. The trail concept, using the word "trail," is a nod to our heritage here in Alberta. And let me just maybe wander off here a little bit and talk about, you drive through Calgary, just about every major highway is called "trail," Stony Trail, Crowfoot Trail, everything's a trail. Same from Calgary going to Edmonton, going north, it's the Edmonton Trail, coming south, it's the Calgary Trail. In Red Deer, it's the Calgary and Edmonton Trail. Same in Edmonton, most of the major thoroughfares are named "trail." This is a very unique part of our Western Canadian heritage, because when the settlers first came here, they came on the trail, the Winnipeg Trail, and the others that came from the east. So, we think we should stay with that, using the trail. Of course, the Mormon pioneers coming north to Carstens follows what you all refer to, we all refer to as the Mormon Trail. So, it's an interesting, I think, and a very necessary part of the monitor here, the Carstens Trail, whichever direction it goes, but it's a gateway to Alberta. So, we are proposing to repurpose the Visitors Information Center, which is just on the east side of the Remington Museum there, to include a Wally's Beach Museum of sorts, displays that tell the story, the untold, as-yet-untold story of Wally's Beach and what's found out there, all while maintaining its function as a visitor information center. So, if you think for just a moment about somebody coming north through Carway, into Carstens, first thing that they're going to want and need is visitors' information, and they're gonna delve into the untold story of Carstens. By that, I mean, we're proposing a unique opportunity here to take advantage of heritage assets, these paleontological and archaeological assets that Shane has access to, some exclusively. And we like here in Carstens, or close enough by, they can be capitalized upon. So, the Carstens Trail, we've broken the gateway project into two phases, and we'll talk about those. Phase one has three elements to it, and so we'll try to paint this as succinctly as we can, so you get an idea of our thinking on this. So, phase one is the beginning of the Carstens Trail. You come across the border, and the first thing that you're going to see is a mammoth herd. I know that irks my ears and eyebrows up. An outside display not far from Carway. The second part is a mammoth hunt. Okay, so we're not only are we gonna see the mammoths, we're gonna see them being hunted, because that's what they found at Wally's Beach, that the mammoths were hunted, both by other animals and by humans. And other Wally's Beach highlights, and those will be inside the visitor center. So, you've got being one outside display, a second outside display pulls them into the visitor center to tell the story of Carstens' prehistory, the as-yet-untold story. So, we'll go. Yeah, and phase two, then, is that once we've told that story, well, there's still lots of other things to see. We get them to the visitor center, we tell them this story, and then they leave, they go to the Remington Center perhaps, Remington Museum, and then what do we do with the people that are seeing this stuff? Well, they go across the bridge and then immediately onto Carstens' historic Main Street. So, we would see phase two as being a Main Street enhancement project, and we can talk in more detail about that later, if you like. For now, we'd like to focus on phase one. So, let's go to the mammoth herd, this outside display, and this is what you would see. Now, this is taken just after you cross the Carway. This is an actual photograph of the hill of an actual mammoth herd that we have found. No, it's, what this is, this would be steel silhouettes of the mammoths. And this hill was there, I put there on purpose, I'm sure, just in this, because this is quite striking, very striking. And this is just a Photoshop, of course, but this is what we would propose as element one, the outside display, to introduce people to Alberta, or at least the first part of Alberta that they're going to see.
Yeah, I'll just jump in here. This hill, I'm sure you're familiar with this hill, you're coming northward, and as you come up this hill, there's just a perfect spot where the road bends, and you can actually see that there's a hill there, that would be absolutely perfect for a display like this.
And I was just going to say, now, if you think of coming north from Montana, at the Coots Crossing, you cross the border and you go up the ways to get to Milk River, what's the first thing you see? Travel Alberta had this, I think it was a brilliant idea, to put that little visitor center there, and you see an Albertosaurus and the dinosaurs there. What they got wrong was that it doesn't make people stop at Milk River, it says, hey, go on to Tyro, keep moving, because the dinosaurs aren't here, they're further north. So, what we're saying here is, yeah, keep moving, but you only have to move about 10 minutes to get to Carstens, to see what the mammoths are on. So, we've got a lot better opportunity here. So, phase two, Shane, I'll let Shane speak about this one.
I'll describe this. So, what you, once we've kind of grabbed visitors by their attentions, we want to pull them in with this idea of doing another display outside the visitor center. So, on the grounds of the visitor center, we want a really jaw-dropping display. And so, it's, just imagine as you're driving down the south hill, and you see this Ice Age unfolding right before your eyes with a mammoth hunting event with both humans and scimitar cats that would be competing with each other for their supersized supper. So, now, I have to say this before I show the next slide. This next slide is kind of just a Photoshop hack job that I threw together to give you an idea of what we're talking about, but it would look something like this. So, okay, you ready to move on to the next slide? So, you can see that this could be quite a dramatization, and we believe that this idea of dramatizing this that really captures the public imagination and will be in a kind of a real stop sign right in the middle of Main Street to say, wait a minute, you gotta check this out, there's something here that's of great interest. So, this would be our focus, to repurpose the interior of the visitor's center with Wally's Beach Museum displays, that's a critical part. Now, I'm gonna run through very quickly what some of the key elements are that we could focus on from our findings at Wally's Beach. We have the first-ever evidence of horse hunting, extinct horse hunting, from Wally's Beach. You could likely imagine a scene like this happening out of Wally's Beach. Again, very dramatic, perhaps even borderline uncontroversial, but this is in fact what was happening, is part of the history of this unique place. We have the first-ever evidence of camel hunting in North America, or in the world, as far as that goes. Camels were part of this landscape, a lot of people say "camels," but yeah, camels. Camels were extinct in the Americas of the Ice Age, where they didn't go extinct in Asia and other parts of the world, so that's an important thing. We have the first-ever scimitar cat teeth. This is a unique cat, it's the same with the cat exclusively mammoth hunters, something that we could absolutely capitalize on in a dramatic display of some kind. Now, that cat will look something like this. So, if the cat's the one on the left, if you can't sort that out. But we're thinking miniature-type displays because of the amount of space that we have in the visitor's center, so we'd like to focus on that. By the way, we have access to the Wally's Beach materials and some very good material, as far as that goes. Other animals that are extinct at Wally's Beach, we've got the helmeted musk oxen, we have bison antiquus, this is a bison that was a third larger than today's bison, this is a recent find platagonus, which is an extinct peccary or type of pig, and this may be the only example of this pig in Canada, we haven't done the research on this fairly recent find. Extinct caribou, and this is probably one of the most interesting aspects of the site. We have extinct animal tracks and trackways, tens of thousands of tracks have been discovered at Wally's Beach, and there's no place on earth that produces trackways or tracks from these extinct animals, so this is pretty spectacular. We have camel tracks, that's a camel track, a beautiful example of a camel track. How about this? It came out of Carston Eye, and Carstens is on the map, it's in the scientific literature, and has kind of been immortalized in that respect with the fossil named Carston Eye. This is a horse track. Mammoth tracks, now, this is a very special story and unique to Carstens. We found these incredible tracks, and I'm gonna give you just a little bit of background on this, because this is truly a Carstens story. When these tracks were exposed, they were in danger of being destroyed, because these tracks are not in stone, they're just in mud or dirt, and the Alberta government and the investigating team working through the University of Calgary were unable to do anything about these tracks. So, it was basically just throwing their hands up in the air and saying, there's nothing we can do but let them go. So, we decided to solicit the help of the local community, and so we went to the high school at that time, and got the football team and some staff members, and said, let's do this. We didn't have a clue what we were going to do, but we just knew that we had to do something, the best set of mammoth tracks on earth, we had to do something to try and salvage them. So, we ended up, that's an example of one of the tracks, really spectacular. So, we ended up on site with 19,000 pounds of plaster, and we just had that, and we were able to cast the entire set of tracks, as well as capture other tracks in the immediate vicinity of camel, horse, etc. We had students doing all kinds of jobs, we had to haul it out in pickups, we had to cut it into meter-by-meter blocks, and it's now sitting in a quonset, this set of tracks, that's in an unnamed location, about five minutes out of town. Now, that's a story we want to tell. You know, it's one thing to have a static display of mammoth tracks, but we would love to have the community's identity kind of elevated by giving this kind of a treatment to it. So, we have photographs of where we were working from, this is a very highly detailed photo, that, yeah, we could actually print this off at that size that you're looking at up there. And it tells the story of the mammoth track recovery project, and celebrates the success of it, and every one of those students, staff, and volunteers now have a unique story that they get to tell, and that's really an important part of this whole process. Other things that are of interest, this is a set of one-of-a-kind artifacts that were central to my thesis, and my interpretation is that these two artifacts represent pronghorn animal horns, again, one-of-a-kind, and this is my interpretation, and this could be a possible resource. This is a painting that actually I spent just about two decades working on, it's done in Photoshop, and it's a huge painting with a lot of detailed elements that I won't go into, but quite frankly, it's 35 feet by 25 feet wide, so quite a unique display item, if that's something that's considered in this proposal, but again, we're just kind of putting ideas out there at this point, so.
Yeah, so, it bears repeating, and Shane mentioned earlier that I have worked with and continue to work with UNESCO, of course, which is the United Nations Educational, Scientific and Cultural Organization, and I have the privilege and the honor actually of working with UNESCO around the world, looking at world heritage sites. And I just brought this along to show you, if you're not familiar with world heritage sites, there's more than this, this book's three years old, but there's 961 in the world. And we have a number here in Alberta, Waterton Glacier is a world heritage site, the Tyro Museum in the Badlands, world heritage site, and we have some close, and around the world, there's over 1,000 of them now. Tabs there are just, I started sticking, putting stickies on the ones that I've worked with. So, I just wanted to emphasize for you to understand, in the world heritage sites that I've worked with, they're all of world significance, and Wally's Beach holds every possibility to be retired as a world heritage site, and I expect that will happen in the not-too-distant future. There's a whole set of criteria and a process and everything, and actually, we're going to start that process whether this project goes ahead or not, because it bears repeating, this is a world-class site with one-of-a-kind things that have been found or seen nowhere else on earth, right here in Carstens. Okay, so, we're back, that's phase one, okay? And that's really our focus at this point in time, is seeing if we can get this Wally's Beach Museum in place and spark the, or add that spark to the economic development of Carstens tourism industry. We think this is a key component, because it tells the as-yet-untold story, the prehistory of Carstens. You get to the ridge, well, not even to the ridge, coming north, the Remington Museum, and you've got a beautiful Main Street. And that's what we want to talk for just a moment about, phase two. Once people are done seeing mammoths and camels in the visitor's center, we want them to enjoy all of those other tourist experiences that we listed earlier. We would, and as I mentioned earlier, we'd call that the Main Street Enhancements, and there's a number of things that can be done. We have talked, and we need to, I'm following here, the Remington Center on the south end of Main Street is an anchor point, okay? So, we have the Remington Center and the visitor's center as a museum anchoring this Carstens Trail on the side of the town, and then you come into the Main Street area. Now, this is a picture that we've drawn, we don't know the exact date of this, but it's, we're guessing somewhere around 1925. I've got some researchers seeing if they can identify some of these automobiles, which will give us a better idea. But this is what Carstens looked like, okay? Within 30 years after it was founded in 1887, I believe, was, this is what Carstens looked like. What a beautiful place. Now, Shane, did you want to talk about the towns that did what Carstens did?
It's really, Carstens was really unique in that it was one of four towns that actually kind of overbuilt their Main Street. So, when you look at the sandstone and the brick, that was some very visionary economic development, those people had a real concept of what this meant. If they could show permanence, if they could show that they had money invested in this town, then that's gonna draw people to this town. So, it was a very, it was a great way to attract people to the community, and they understood that. So, there were only four communities that did this, that kind of overbuilt on this level, and it was Fort McLeod, Blarmore, La Combe, and Carstens. So, it's an interesting point, but I'd also like to point out, it's kind of that same vision that we have today. vision that we have today, that we're approaching this from. You know, we presented some pretty... Some big ideas so far. So we really want to kind of look at this for inspiration in terms of what... How this community got started and perhaps where it could go with some of these elements that we're talking about.
Now, we're not necessarily saying that we're going to try to recreate this, but a lot of what you see there is still there, okay? And we can capitalize on that. We can capitalize on that and use that part of the Carstens Trail, that historic Main Street. So we have the basic elements of a wonderful, very attractive historic Main Street, one of the best in Alberta. So what we're proposing or saying here is that we believe that a planned and concerted Main Street project, and we don't know what that means yet or what that would entail in any great detail, other than to capture the flavor of that original settler's of Carstens. We saw it as a prosperous, prominent town and wanted to attract, at that time, settlers. You have to remember, this is right in the middle of the CPR settlement push, bringing people to the west. Now, we're not necessarily attracting settlers, but we want to attract visitors to come and see what we've got. So we think this Main Street has the potential for turning the entire downtown core from the Remington on the south right to the Caboose Hotel on the north southwest corner of Main Street. Beautiful historic Main Street. And we can get into more detail on that later. There's the Caboose Hotel as it was. Shane talked about being overbuilt. You know, the original, go to the next one, yeah. I mean, the original Caboose Hotel looked like this, and it's still... The basics are still there. But imagine, in a place like Carstens, which wasn't on the main train line, wasn't on the main anything, and for somebody to have the optimism and the foresight to build a fifty or sixty-room hotel, a very important part of the history. Now, we've talked with the owner. We had a tour of the hotel last week, and an amazing place. And he has... The owner has great plans for it, and we wish him the best. If half of his plans come true, you've got a great historic resource here.
Okay, well, this could be possibly a third phase. It's one that we haven't given a lot of detailed thought to, but frankly, we do have this resource that we could extend the Carstens Trail and something to consider. I mean, this is Kynie days. Is there anything that we can do with the folks to the north of us that we could actually capitalize on, where we had a win-win situation? So we wanted to include that, just to explore that potential.
So we thank you for your time. We've gone on probably too long here, but this is important stuff. Next steps, where do we go from here, okay? We appreciate your time and letting us present to you. So we're asking you tonight, if you can, or within at your next meeting, we're asking you to approve in principle, if you agree, if you think that this is something we're pursuing, to approve in principle the concept of phase one tonight. Phase one, which includes these three elements. The mammoth herd, outside display, a mile out of Carling. The mammoth hunt, the exterior display at the visitor's center. And then the Wally's Beach highlights, the inside displays. That's a bite-sized chunk that we have already detailed to some degree, and this is something we can do for you if you agree to it, okay? So we would come back to you, if you approve the concept that we presented you, we would come back to you in a few weeks. And that's negotiable, of course, and depend somewhat upon our time and schedule. We would come back to you with some fairly detailed structural and architectural concepts for those three elements, okay? The mammoth herd, the mammoth hunt, and the visitor's center displays. We will come back to you with a schedule for those things, okay? How long will it take us realistically to do that? It's not something that can happen overnight, and I speak my experience, that it takes the time that it takes and usually then some. And the third thing, and this is the question, I'm sure, that if I asked you, if you had any questions, this would be what you would ask, what's it going to cost and who's going to pay, okay? So we would come back to you with some fairly detailed financial projections of what those three elements will cost based on that project's schedule. So it's not going to be, you know, you write a big check. It will be based upon your fiscal year breakdowns and what we would need to do that, to make those three things happen over the time that it takes. Now, let me interject here also that that will include, and we are very cognizant that you are the guardians of the public trust. You were talking, the finances and the funds that you oversee are taxpayers' dollars. We're very aware of that. We're taxpayers, too. And so what we will include in that is also some projections for where you can look for money outside, town funds, all right? And I'll just say, I've done a lot of work applying for grants federally, provincially, philanthropically, and I know pretty well what's out there. And there is a number that I think this would pick very well into. So we'll give you some, at least some high-level details at this point in the project. We can go after some grant funding here, there, and wherever, and we'll identify that for you and how that can work. Okay. Now, to do that, to do the financial stuff, we need to understand your finances, the town of Carstens finances. So I would request, as soon as possible, if you approve, to meet with the CAO and your senior financial people, to give me a good understanding of your cash flow, of funds that may or may not be available over, say, the next three to five years. That will enable me then to go back and do down the street to create that plan based upon some realistic detail from your financial people as to what's possible financially and what's not. And we'll adjust things according to that. So that would be my one request of you. We would also bring back draft terms of reference. Once you get this stuff, we would hope that there will be a contract in place for us to move ahead and start the ballgame, get this underway. And we'll bring you some terms of reference that we feel would be a good working relationship by contract to begin the detailed planning and design process. And we'll lay out for you what that means, what the planning process is, what the design process is, and what your role would be and your responsibilities and ours, which will lead to a formal contract, which we...
Can I ask you a question?
You certainly may.
When you started the presentation, the presentation seemed to be based on the assumption that carway crossing was going to be open twenty-four seven. I know that is a wish of ours. But how strong an assumption is it?
Well, I can't answer that question, and...
And is the project based on that assumption?
Not fully, no. And you're absolutely right in pointing that out, that this isn't a sequitur-type of situation where one follows the other. If you think about the carway crossing, it's now open from seven to eleven. So there's really only eight hours that it's closed at the moment. So opening twenty-four hours isn't going to make a whole lot of difference, except with your overnight traffic. People who are going somewhere need someplace to stay overnight. That's where I think the difference will be. Plus, it's more of a psychological change for people because everybody knows, you know, you're looking on the map and it'll tell you, carway's closed from eleven to seven. Whereas people who are traveling through Coots can go any time of the day or night, and they don't have to worry about it. So in the initial status, it probably won't mean a whole... Make a whole lot of difference to traffic patterns, but it will when we here in Carstens start marketing it that way. Come through a carway, now open twenty-four seven, and stop at seven at Carstens. So I think the marketing and the communications effort that we will have to build into our plan here will make the difference and bring those tourists up highway, too. And I think a big part of the market won't necessarily come from the south, it'll also come from the north. I think once our fellow Albertans realize that, hey, I can get to Glacier Park or go to Spokane lots faster coming this way than going down through Coots and the crossroad or Kings Gate or Roosevelt through B C.
Yeah.
So it's... This project is not really entirely based upon that. We think that the border being open twenty-four seven will help.
More or less. It just really inspired us to start thinking about these kind of things.
No, I... Don't get me wrong, we want to see that border open. But I'm thinking, realistically, do we bind your project to that idea, or do we go along with the project and hope for the best?
Yeah, and I would have to say, I wouldn't want to see them tied together. You know, they should probably be hopefully together, you know, the federal government. So they'd say, "No, it's what it is, and we're not going to change it." Because the federal government has to deal with the U.S. government. And we all know the flavor of the tickets and the terms of immigration and all of that across the border. So, yeah, I think your point is very well taken. And we have to ask ourselves, so what if carway stays as it is? Well, I think this project is still viable, and I think the marketing and communications still can attract people across without the extra eight hours of crossing time.
Okay, thanks.
Brad, this is a very bold and end question, but I'm going to ask it. With you being able to do so many different projects like this, you've been involved in it, can you give us some kind of an idea of what you're asking for initially?
In terms of money?
Money, yeah.
Well...
Just give us a shot.
Yeah, well, Shane, bring up this next slide. Let's put your questions very well. And there's two parts to it. This is what we would ask you from you right away, okay? To this point in time, Shane and I have done what we've done, spent a lot of time and effort at some expense out of our pocket, and we don't be going to have it all. We are excited about this project, and we would like to be here. However, we are professionals, and to move forward from this point, this is what we would ask of you, okay? This would get us to that four-stage report when we come back and say, here's the details, the schedule, the financial, and everything else. Now, I think what you were looking at or asking for was, what's the big number? What's the mammoth display going to cost, all three elements? And I'm going to politely decline to answer that because, A, we just don't know at this point. Now, it's not going to be cheap. We'll be tucking seven figures at least. But how big that seven figures, or maybe it would come in under seven figures, we just don't know. We need to do that number crunching and do more research to give you that number. And I said I declined politely. Please accept that. I have found that if I take a, you know, pick a number, then that gets embedded in everybody's mind. And if I say it's high, and I come back, or if I give you a high number, and I come back and it's a million dollars lower, then gee, we're heroes, you know? We saved you a million dollars. If I come in low and it's a million dollars higher, you're all scratching your heads and saying, "What did they do?", you know? So it's simply a... For me, it's a professional thing. I hate to do that because that phenomenon does happen, those numbers that are tossed out, get carved in stone, more or less, at least in people's minds. And it's not fair to you, and it's not fair to us when it changes. So I'd rather come back to you in a few weeks and give you at least a number that's, you know, within a range that you can digest. So, yes.
I was just thinking, I'm thinking of the Remington Center when it was built and the scale that we had there. Would this project be anywhere near the scale?
Nowhere near that.
You see, that cost sixteen million dollars.
In nineteen ninety dollars.
Yeah, nineteen ninety dollars. So, yeah, I mean, I don't see that kind of money.
No, certainly not. And this project has the advantage for you, certainly. The building's there, the land's there. The biggest part of the expense is already out. Now, just to... And maybe this will give you some kind of an idea, just in comparison. The displays in the Remington Center, which I helped to design and fabricate and install there, were right around two and a half million dollars, just the displays, in nineteen ninety dollars. Now, just in terms of square footage of the visitor's center and square footage compared against the square footage of Remington, we're not near...
Nowhere near that.
We're nowhere near that in nineteen ninety dollars. But I don't want to say what we're near, because, you know, it's just, it's too nebulous in my mind to be able to have a believable, realistic amount.
Any other questions here?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Peter?
So you talked about applying for some grants, and you're very versed in that. I don't want to throw out a number, but let's say, you know, a million dollars. What percentage of that would be covered by the grants you could apply for? Is that a fair question?
Oh, that's a fair question, a very good question. And I'll try to answer as succinctly as possible. There are a number of granting agencies out there. The provincial government has some very good grants. The federal government has one program where theoretically at least it's possible to go to a max to a million bucks and get it without... With very little matching funds. Now, most grants federally and provincially up until this last year were... They were matching. You had fifty percent, they'd kick in fifty percent. The federal program that I have in mind isn't designed that way, and it's designated specifically for arts and cultural facilities. And you have to have a bit of seed money locally, but then it's kind of, how good a case can you make for the longer money that you want? Now, the provincial government, just last year, you're all familiar with the CFAP program, Community Facility Enhancement Program, and it was to be matching, fifty-fifty, except under exceptional circumstances where you could sometimes get sixty, forty. But for the most part, it was fifty-fifty. Now, just last year, the government, provincial government changed the CFAP program. You now have two streams, a small stream for smaller projects, and then a big stream. The large stream, I believe, I'd have to check this, but I believe if you have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a project like this, you can ask for a million. In other words, you put up a hundred and twenty-five, they'll give you eight hundred and seventy-five, possibly, okay? It's not... No guarantees, of course, when you're playing in this ballgame. So there is the possibility, we come back to you and ask for a big number, there is a very good possibility that a lot of it can be covered by other jurisdictions. It's a lot of work, and it's a pain. I absolutely hate making up the occupations, but I have to say, I've been pretty successful with it the last number of years. Yes?
Councilman Brown?
So are we your first ask? Are you going to ask Blood Tribe? Are you going to ask the county? Are you solely just asking us?
You are the first, and we would look to you for direction, okay? If you feel that there's... Now, I'm not familiar. I know in my hometown, I live in a small town within the county, within the Loop County, outside of Edmonton, and the county there has a very good reciprocal type of agreement. The town does something in the arts and the cultural side, the county's at the table, and they kick in a percentage based upon population, mostly. So if you have those kinds of agreements with the county, we would be... we would be glad to go to the county and make the pitch. And you tell us what you'd like us to ask for or how this all works. We'd be glad to work with you on that.
Thank you.
Blood Tribe, down the line, we've looked at Phase Three, okay? And this is a longer-term thing and much more complicated to get into the cultural exchange kinds of things. And I've done a fair bit of work and passed with some of the Northern bands and First Nations, much more complicated because the federal government's involved, okay? And you're talking to people in Ottawa, and you say, who are you? What's going on? And it takes a long, longer time to get that communication to where you have an actual working relationship, so. Yeah, we would look to you for direction and guidance on that, so, as we get to it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Good? Well, thank you very much, and we'll certainly discuss it and-- Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yes, thank you for stretching our ten minutes.
Well, I can see the ten minutes wasn't going to be anywhere near enough. Okay, so, we need to adopt the minutes of the last CCW meeting in March. Did we have a chance to look that over?
I would like to adopt the minutes of March sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Any question? South Councillor, South, I'll turn around and make a vote here real quick. All in favor?
Thank you.
What did I vote for?
Adopt the minutes. Okay. We've got number six.
Can I just ask a question? Jeff, the question is for you. We had written a letter to the Minister McQuaid for it regarding the, with the town of Pinoka, regarding the electoral. Have you ever received an answer? No, thanks.
All right, so, number six, bylaw policy. We have a discussion here regarding a budget for two thousand and eighteen. Jeff?
We have some food for you, if you want to do that quick.
I definitely do. Okay.
I just want Hawk and Stick to hold a little longer.
Yeah, okay, so, we have a motion to recess for a bit and have something to eat?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, do you want to offer a blessing of the food for us, too? Okay, after we have the motion, all in favor?